Okay. Would you make, would you make? Yeah, right, exactly. Would you make, would you make? Would you show up for the, for the, for the, uh, would you answer any questions? Would you? 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 Knock yourself off. Dancing's off limits right now. I got a bad look. Okay. No, I just, it's just a moment. So the call choice, I'm not going to have to admit that I felt the stare of enthusiasm. Yeah, bourbon or not. Did this involve, did your involved bourbon? Can't say that.
When you told me Monday, I didn't ask any questions. I was just like, oh.
That's why I don't wear, usually wear socks today. When those hit carpet. The bad thing is my stairway just goes up like this and then turn and it goes up. It doesn't have any rails. Like two rail also, like when you go to, there's nothing you can grab.
No. Is it a lot of stairs or is it?
No, it's like five stairs up and four stairs, you know, whatever, six and five. Usually not a, not a problem. Till it becomes a problem. So I, I put the budget amendment in for Mayor Ford. And I talked to GM. We took a portion of it for this year. It's like seventy-five thousand for the two grand, sixteen fifteen, and seventy-nine thousand from the general fund.
For this year.
That's all she put in. So there's still about, there's still about twenty-two thousand. They'll have to come out next year. She says she thought you had that in seventy-five, which is okay.
Yeah.
So somehow what I gotta do is that was all going into wages. I don't know how to roll by eighteen, the surplus, the leftover seven and a half. What I'm saying? Because you took seventy-nine out this year. You're only gonna spend, not gonna spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Fair enough.
That's what the budget is for this year.
That should cover us through pretty much next year. Thanks.
I have a feeling we were probably overestimating, but she's charging too much of the grant. It doesn't say that we have to do a proposal. Fortunately, hey, we can do the grant on Friday, our match later.
I don't know. I haven't. I spent all day today with a meeting in Chicago about this university program, which is gonna be.
Paying the ass?
Uh, it's got two million dollars of federal EDA funds.
You gotta monitor stuff forever.
And then we got two million dollars of state EDP funds. And then we're making up the difference. Like it's just, it's.
So we just need to say we're gonna put in the federal first, the state second, ours last. Doesn't have to be done proportionally.
It's gotta be done proportionally. Forty, forty, twenty is kinda how it's broken down. Forty percent, forty percent.
Okay. We can set that up then.
Okay. And we have to.
Once we have a contract or let's say.
Yeah, the, here's the other thing, like they'll pay.
For six million dollars, we can go forty percent, forty percent. And you charge them very far.
They'll reimburse us for engineering, design engineering, but not until we have a construction contract. So we gotta front load the designers.
Is that coming out of our match at the beginning?
Yeah, like I mean, it'll, it'll wash out to where it's all the same at the end. But they just, I always talk to them about lead time.
So once when we get, once we get the.
Cause the reimbursement, so we gotta bill them.
Once we get the construction cost, or the contract left and approved, then we can go back to block engineering. So then we need to go back and submit, let's say it's five hundred thousand, we need to submit two hundred thousand to this one. And two hundred thousand to this.
They want us to submit the whole amount and then they'll reimburse us forty percent off the whole.
Five hundred?
They want us to submit five hundred.
So let's just say it's five hundred.
They want us to submit that and then they'll do, they'll reimburse us.
No reimburse us two hundred. No reimburse us two hundred.
Yep.
And we'll have our hundred.
Yep. Yep.
Gotcha. It's gotta be on the same page and this is, I don't have a lot of cash to be, open a lot of people on front.
And this is, uh, we do already have our CFDA number, or yeah, number, some other number.
Number this, number that, number three others. Okay. Yeah, we'll take, I was just looking at the sewer fund. Cause I'm not gonna be able to issue these bonds until like February, into January. I'm gonna be short, but I would've been right on target to have like five hundred thousand surplus. That would've spent the two point seven.
Yeah.
We'd like to call this evening's special meeting, the Peoria City Council to order. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis, Councilmember Akerson, Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner. Do you have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the United States of America.
Madam Clerk.
The first item of business is a public hearing regarding the ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for the tax year two thousand seventeen for the Westlake Special Service Area, and that item is seventeen dash three sixty-six.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the petitioner is here and would like to say a few words on, on this item here.
Okay. Before we do that, we'll do a motion to open the public hearing by Councilman Montalongo, seconded by Councilwoman Akerson. Seeing no objections, please cast your ballots to open the public hearing. Councilman Riegenbach. Councilman Riegenbach. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, Councilman Montalongo, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, uh, tonight, we're here to discuss the real estate tax levy for two thousand seventeen on the Westlake property in relation to the special service area. So this is just the special service area component of the real estate tax that's paid by the owner. Uh, the reason we have the hearing tonight is because the increase, uh, is more than five percent year over year from the prior year's levy, which was forty thousand dollars. This year it's sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, each year, the Westlake group that manages Westlake, uh, and Morton Community Bank and city staff get together and review the performance of the sales tax receipts for the past year that come from the special service area, uh, review their receipts from the real estate tax levy, look at the debt service and projected expenses for the next year. Uh, and one of the key items that they look at is what the appropriate amount of the real estate tax levy should be for the following year. Uh, again, this is the amount paid by the owner and it's separate and apart from the sales tax. Uh, after reviewing consultation with the bank and with city staff, it was determined this year that the appropriate amount for the levy would be sixty-five thousand. The rationale behind this year's increase, uh, would be as follows. Some of you have been here through, uh, uh, the process of establishing this and, and seeing it, uh, work over the years. Uh, in twenty twelve, twenty eleven, I believe the levy was as high as a hundred and sixty-four thousand before we had real, the sales, special sales tax component of this, uh, was reduced after passage of that to eighty thousand dollars, uh, subsequently to forty thousand dollars for the last two years. And while most stores at Westlake are performing well, uh, the shopping center certainly is not immune to the same issues that the city has been seeing, uh, citywide with declines in sales tax revenue, and that also applies to the special service area sales tax. Uh, and in that regard, in consultation with the bank, uh, it was determined that adjusting the real estate tax component of this this year, uh, would be appropriate to help offset some of those changes, uh, and to make sure that the debt service is provided for, for two thousand seventeen, or two thousand eighteen, excuse me. That the bank does not require the full amount of the levy expresses its confidence that, uh, the program that we have in place is still working and that the steps that are being taken by the management at Westlake, uh, are appropriate to ensure that the debt service, uh, and the continued success of the shopping center and the special service area in general, uh, remain. So, uh, without any further comment, I'd invite any questions that you might have, since we're here to speak to that.
Any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, Councilman Montalongo?
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, if there's no further discussion, I would make a second call for anyone who would like to address the council on this, uh, special service area for, uh, property ta, or real estate tax for the Westlake Special Service Area. Third and last call, anyone who would like to address the council on public hearing regarding the ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for the tax year two thousand seventeen for the Westlake Special Service Area. Seeing none, I have a motion from Councilmember Montalongo to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilman Turner. Uh, seeing no discussions, please cast your ballots to close the public hearing. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We're at the township portion of the meeting. Seventeen dash three fifty-five is a communication from the town officials budget committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April first, two thousand seventeen, and ending March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, of the town of the city of Peoria for the town general fund and Illinois municipal re, retirement fund in the amount of seven, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, one dollar.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance as outlined.
Uh, motion to approve, seconded by, uh, trustee Akerson. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three fifty-six is a communication from the town officials budget committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April first, two thousand seventeen, and ending March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, for the general assistance fund, um, in the amount of one million five hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars.
Uh, trustee Grab.
Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance as outlined.
Motion to approve, seconded, uh, trustee Turner. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Uh, yes, this is the consent agenda. Seventeen dash three fifty-seven is a communication from the city clerk with a request to approve a resolution in support of the Illinois bicentennial celebrations. Seventeen dash three fifty-eight is a communication from the fireman's pension fund board of trustees regarding the municipal compliance report with a request to receive and file, and seventeen dash three fifty-nine is a communication from the police pension fund board of trustees regarding the municipal compliance report with a request to receive and file, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent this evening? Uh, seeing no lights, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Ruck Regal and seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at first readings. Seventeen dash three sixty is a communication from the city manager with a request for a first reading of an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the code of the city of Peoria pertaining to special event fees.
Mr. Manager, did you wanna outline this?
Uh, thank you. This is the, the draft of the language that we'd like to insert into the municipal code that would just cover the special event fees. Uh, this would establish the fee of up to two hundred dollars, um, for a police officer, which covers the situations if we have, um, an event where it might not require four hours worth of time of a police officer. It would be less that the charge would be, and then a hundred dollars per, um, intersection that the public works department actually closes with barricades, so.
Questions for the manager or staff regarding first reading? Um, seeing none, uh, I'd entertain a motion to receive and file, Councilman Euler, uh, seconded by, uh, Councilman Ruck Regal. Further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three sixty-one is a communication from the city manager with a request for a first reading of an ordinance amending chapter eleven of the code of the city Peoria pertaining to fire prevention and protection fees.
Uh, Mr. Manager, any comments on this?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. The, the next item that you have that's here on first reading is the fees that we talked about in the fire department. Um, this would generate approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of additional revenue.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager or staff? Or a motion to receive and file? Councilwoman Jensen?
Oh, so moved.
Motion to receive and file, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Akerson? Is there any further discussion on this item? Uh, Councilwoman Jensen?
You, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna thank staff again in the council, um, for, for working on this and, and just for the public, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that this is raising should cover about three firefighter positions.
Approximately, yeah.
Okay. And this mainly increases the hazardous material fees, is that correct?
This raises a number of fees we had, we had talked about. It's, it's really looking at a number of the, the different permitting fees that the, the fire department is currently, uh, charging. It includes both hazardous materials, their general permits, um, and then, um, basically just adjusts, uh, a number of the other fees that have been in as part of the code that we've had for a number of years, so.
And the majority, my understanding is most of these fees have not been increased since two thousand and six, if not earlier than that.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion to second to receive and file first reading. Please cast your ballots. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at regular business. Seventeen dash three twenty-eight is a request to adopt an ordinance amending chapter thirty-one of the code of the city of Peoria pertaining to stormwater utility.
Mr. Manager, maybe what we'll do on these, since they're, they've all been previously discussed, is, uh, if you wanted to just give, uh, a, a brief on just, uh, more for public, uh, knowledge, what the item is that we're discussing.
Sure, this, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this seventeen three twenty-eight is the adoption of the stormwater utility, um, and the establishment of the stormwater utility fee. Um, this would be a fee that would be imposed upon all real estate and, and real estate parcels inside the city, whether they're currently taxable or not. Um, it would, uh, in essence, establish a billing unit, um, for impervious surface, and that impervious surface includes rooftops, sidewalks, patios, driveways. Um, and, uh, from that, we would, we would calculate a, a billing charge for each property, uh, and there would be a responsibility to the property owners to pay that. Um, this would fund the creation of our stormwater, uh, utility program, um, managing all of our drainage and wet weather programs, uh, in the city, and then obviously also helping to assist us with, um, the, the combined sewer overflow as we move into that and managing the green stormwater infrastructure we would have for that.
I mean, on, timing on the, uh, implementation as well as the establishment of the credits.
So the, the, the timing on this would be that, that we would be anticipating sending out the first set of bills in June of, of next year with a due date of July one. Uh, we anticipate that we would, we would be collecting roughly four point six seven million dollars over that seven month period of time. Um, and then, um, it, fully annualized, this should be about an eight million dollar program is what we're anticipating it to be. Um, and then, um, we would be working, obviously, this, um, from, from this point going forward and into the, to the first part of the year, on, uh, discussion with the public about our, the credit manual and incentive manual that we would be putting in place, um, in order to establish the program. There's a lot of work that, that I think Public Works has to do to ramp up the stormwater utility program and, um, that's anticipated as part of this budget as well.
Thank you. Any, uh, discussion, questions for the manager or Public Works Director or discussion? Or a motion? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a, a question, and I, I believe we went over this at the last meeting, but the manual, once it's complete, it, will, will it have to come back to council for approval?
Uh, I don't believe that, um, it has to come back, but we could certainly bring that back so that we could have a further discussion with you and walk through all of the, the credits. It's a very technical document, uh, as, if you've had a chance to flip through it and look at it, um, but we can certainly come back and outline what, what we would be looking at as far as credits and, and the incentives that we would try and build in place with that.
I, I would prefer that as long as we could have, I mean, we don't have to get into specifics, but give some general approval over the general direction, since that's part of the ordinance that we're being asked to adopt here today. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Riegenbach, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Additional discussion, Councilman Montalongo?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting no on this item tonight for, for many reasons. Um, I'll try and keep my, my comments to a minimum as I've, as I've expressed my, uh, thoughts about this many times. Um, but I, I really believe this stormwater utility fee and policy is not the right one for our community, as it solves a problem that the majority of this community does not have outside the CSO zone. Uh, concerning the CSO, we've not settled yet with the EPA Department of Justice, and I think we are getting the cart in front of the, the horse. Um, and I absolutely disagree with the amount that is being proposed, uh, today. Uh, concerning the stormwater issues and the four hundred something projects that are in backlog, um, I believe that they should be done within a reasonable amount per year, and what, and once again, I think the amount that is being proposed tonight is, is not the right one for our community, so, um, I will be voting no on this item.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilman Riegenbach?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Uh, that motion passes, uh, with ten ayes and one nay. Uh, Councilmember Montalongo. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three twenty-nine is a request to adopt an ordinance amending chapter thirteen of the code of the city of Peoria pertaining to the increase of refuse fee.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seventeen three twenty-nine is the changes to the code, um, for the, um, residential, uh, trash collection fee. Um, as part of the budget, we recommended a rate adjustment to the, the trash fee from fourteen dollars a month up to seventeen dollars a month in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen in two thousand and twenty, and twenty dollars in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the rate would be adjusted for stacked condominiums from six dollars a month, uh, currently to seven dollars and fifty cents in two thousand and eighteen, eight dollars per month in two thousand, uh, nineteen, or, uh, and then, uh, eight fifty in two thousand and twenty, and nine dollars a month in two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Questions for the manager or motion? Uh, Councilman Riegenbach, motion to approve, uh, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Um, seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three thirty is a request to approve or adopt an ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven of the code of the city Peoria pertaining to amusement tax.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, uh, item seventeen three thirty is the ordinance, uh, change that would impose the, uh, increase in the amusement tax from two percent to three percent. Um, this would generate, uh, a one percent increase in the amusement cha, tax would generate about four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars annually.
Uh, discussion on this item? Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, does this item have any, um, negative impact on the civic center activities?
Well, I, I think that, that the, there's been some concern raised by the civic center about the, the sensitivity of pricing, um, and that, that the impact of, of trying to book events, um, with, uh, an additional cost, uh, that would have to be either paid by the ticket going public, um, or it would have to be absorbed in the ticket price, I think is a concern, uh, that they've raised, um, to us. I, I think they've sent everyone emails to that effect, um, and raised that as a concern.
We know whether they are, um... Do you know whether they are holding their own over there? Are they making any money doing what they do? Are they running a deficit?
They have been, as we've seen, and I think we had their budget that was presented to you several months back, they are not operating in the black. They have been operating in the red, but they have been making strides at getting closer and closer to breaking even. And I say that when you understand that breaking even also includes the significant amount of HRA tax revenues that are going to pay the debt service on the Civic Center and then the operating subsidies that they currently carry with the HRA tax dollars that they're currently receiving.
Should we have any concern that this tax will, as they are making strides on getting in the black, should we have any concerns that this will short-circuit that travel?
Well, it might. That might be one of those reactions or effects that comes out of this by taking an action on this. But it also could be something that I think that, you know, as they continue to market the Civic Center and try and sell events, they need to get out and work at trying to book acts and events and activities that are going to fill that Civic Center up, and I think that that's a concern as well.
The way you make that presentation, it kind of infers that they're not doing enough, or perhaps they could be doing more?
I wouldn't say that they're not doing enough at all. I don't want that. I just think that we've had numerous conversations here about the Civic Center over the years and talked about the need for the Civic Center to be utilizing that space as much as they possibly can. You know, they could be, I think they could probably break even and be open a third of the year, but is that really the best use of that space for the city and for the community? Is having a Civic Center that's just open a third of the year? Or do we want them open and having activities and events that are bringing people downtown and spending money in the city? And I think that's what we're really looking for. That's the essence of it being a Civic Center, is that it's a place of activity that we have here in the heart of our city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, just a couple of questions. Can you give us a little bit of background on the HRA tax? When was the last time they were raised? And maybe a little breakdown on where does the income or the tax, who pays that? The breakdown, I guess, for the A portion of HRA.
So the H, and I'm going to ask Director Skraggins to help me on this front as we walk through this. The HRA tax is really comprised of three taxes: hotels, restaurant, and amusement. So you have the hotel tax, which was recently raised two years ago. We raised that, and I believe that's currently at eight percent. It's at eight percent is the hotel tax rate, two percent of which is going to help us to pay for roads. That was the increase. It was increased two years ago to put an additional $500,000, is that, or?
Approximately $800,000.
$800,000 into roads. So that's the increase that we have that was done two years ago. The remaining six percent of the hotel tax, and then the restaurant tax, which is two percent on all restaurant sales throughout the city. And then there's the amusement tax portion, which is currently at two percent. That's paid on activities such as bowling, that's paid on activities in the Fifth District at like the Elevate Trampoline Park, you're paying the amusement tax. If you go to a movie, you're paying for it. If you have cable television, you're paying for it at your home as an amusement. So that generates, again, roughly about a million dollars. I think the restaurant portion is closer to...
It's about four and a half million.
Four and a half, and then the hotel tax portion, we're looking at another...
Around two and a half, two and a half to three.
So that's how much is comprised of each of those. And so when we were discussing revenue increases or potential revenue increases earlier this year, we talked about a one percent increase in the A tax would generate roughly $491,000.
So for the A tax, do we have a breakdown? Where does the money come from, locally or outside Peoria?
Well, I would say that the A tax that's paid by people that have cable TV is coming from inside the city. The amount that's paid for by people that are coming to events and activities, whether that's movies, or bowling, or coming to the Civic Center and paying to watch Bradley Basketball, or events at the Civic Center, or concerts, there's a portion of that that's paid, and it's capturing from people that don't live inside the city of Peoria, that may be in the metro area or maybe even outside of the metro area. And that's one of the advantages of having a tax like that, is that we're not just taxing our residents with that in and of itself. But I don't know if we have a complete breakout of how much is coming from outside of the city versus how much is coming from in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Grab.
One point, I think, is that we do have exemptions here for our grammar junior high and senior-level high schools, government bodies, the not-for-profits, as well as the not-for-profit religious educational or charitable institutions.
That's correct. There are certain exemptions to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to just add, kind of along the lines of some of Councilman Moore's questions, our Civic Center Authority Board does a really good job of managing their money in very difficult time. And I think last year was one of the lowest deficits they've had than I can remember. Maybe it was under $100,000, which, I mean, we'd like to have them break even at best, but as the manager said, in these types of facilities, it's difficult to do, because there's a lot of things that they do off there, over there, that they write off for community events and so on. But I think they've done a really good job, deserve a lot of credit. I know I've talked to the board, several of the board members, in concerns with when the next contract comes up with SMG, who manages that for us? And I think it's really important that, you know, we put some more pressure on SMG. They do this for a lot of different cities around the country, and I think we would like to see if SMG can maybe, you know, do a better job of leveraging the influence they have, especially in the convention business and with the concert venues, to be able to put some more acts in the Civic Center. So the last part of this, and I really want to send this out to the chairman of the Authority as well as the board members who have called and expressed their concern, we hear you. We understand that everybody's trying to watch their bottom line, watch the numbers that they're working with, and if there is something that we probably could have, not probably, that we can improve on in this area, is to have better communication on the front side between us and the board when situations like this come up. And I have talked to the manager about it before, and we've talked to the chairman, and we have pledged that we'll do a much better job of that as well. So any further comments, or can I get a motion? Councilman Regenbach, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Akerson. Seeing no further lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes with nine ayes, two noes, voting no, Councilmembers Seer and Ruckregel. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three sixty-two is a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $65,000 for the tax year 2017 for the Westlake Special Service Area.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
As we previously had the public hearing, this is the levy for the Westlake Special Service Area.
Councilman Montalongo.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three sixty-three is a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the total amount of $148,060 against the specified parcels as Exhibit A for the tax year 2017 for the Knoxville Junction Special Service Area.
Councilman Regenbach.
Thank you, Mr. This special service area was established to facilitate the funding of the traffic signal at the Junction City Donovan Park intersection, so this is something we do each year, so I move for the approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three sixty-four is a request to adopt an ordinance levying the taxes for fiscal year 2018 for municipal purposes for the City of Peoria.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the property tax levy ordinance. This represents a total levy in the amount of $28,478,081 and a tax rate of $1,346.29. This communication also outlines for you the previous year's levy. We will have for you next week the additional levy ordinance for the bonds. As you remember, we have a second levy ordinance that comes forward, levying the $2 million that we have as we have to abate some of our property tax-based bonds. So that'll be coming forward at December 12th. So this will, does not have an increase of more than five percent, so there was no truth in taxation hearing that was held for the property tax levy either.
Questions for the manager? Councilman Grab.
Manager, you and I have had this discussion already. Under the Police Department, we have a Personnel Services line item of $24,982,055. Now, is part of that the holding over of the outgoing Assistant Police Chief to help train the incoming Assistant Police Chief, and how much would that be costing us? And is it really worthwhile for us to do that?
It does include that dollar amount. We have about three months left with, if we look at beginning January one, so this would basically cover the first quarter of time where Lisa Snow is staying on, providing that guidance and training and assistance. I think it provides a good amount of cover, as Assistant Chief Marion is new to his position, and he's relatively new to the command staff, so I do think that it's money well spent to keep this period of time. The cost of that, if I remember correctly, it's going to be about $30,000 is going to be the cost that we would have for that three-month period of time.
Have we entered into a contract yet for this purpose?
We did. I mean, we outlined an employment arrangement with Lisa Snow in that regard to provide that assistance for that period of time.
I, without any aspersion on any member of our Police Department, because I think they do a great job for the most part. I don't think I ever recall the city doing something like this. Usually it'd be the Police Chief that would be the mentor for the person moving up. Plus, we have stressed over and over again the need for a succession training here in this organization. And it seems to me during a tight budget cycle, it's a luxury at best, it's not a necessity. And I personally don't support it. If you've already executed a contract, and we obviously can't break our contracts, but, you know, we have one of our captains who's been around, what, 30-plus years? I just think that when things are as tight as a tick, that this was a luxury. And I can't remember it ever being done in the past, to spend that kind of money for somebody who is taking a new position, they're already in the Police Department, there is a police superintendent, there are three captains. It just doesn't seem reasonable to me that we would have to do it, certainly for, what, a three-month period of time. It just, and I've mentioned this to you before.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Or motion? Got motion by Councilman Akerson, seconded by Councilman Moore. Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Seventeen dash three sixty-five is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to approve a resolution adopting the 2018-2019 biennial budget for the City of Peoria.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the total budget for 2018-2019. This basically encompasses all of the actions that you have taken up and including this evening. The budget as proposed would have a budget in 2018 of $198,921,479, and the budget in 2019 would be $198,93,090. As we have discussed previously, in the General Fund, which has been one of our concerns, because it's our major operating budget, the budget would add in 2018 $1.6 million in fund balance, and then in 2019, it would add another $564,000 in fund balance in 2019. So the budget as outlined establishes the stormwater utility. It provides for an operating budget that is, while lean and while we've made some adjustments, it still provides for the services to run the city, and then also tries to replenish some of our cash reserves as well.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Regenbach, seconded by Councilman Turner. Discussion? Councilman Grab.
Mr. Manager, in reference to the Fire Department, are we doing the same thing with some of the vacancies, having tutors?
So as it comes to the Fire Department, we've had some discussions with the Fire Chief about possibly doing that with two of the positions that have taken the voluntary separation initiative. We have not formalized anything as of yet, though, so nothing has been put to paper in that regard.
And would that exceed $15,000 threshold for approval?
It is, perhaps it might, depending on the amount of time that we would need to do something along those lines.
I think that should come back to the council, and I'm not trying to pick on the Fire Department, obviously, but, again, succession training is something that should be ongoing. I don't see any need to have this. I think it's a luxury at best, especially with our budget. Again, I'm going to use the phrase again, tight as a tick. So I would hope that would come back for approval, and I hope no one thinks it's a foregone conclusion.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments here. We set out on an objective to accomplish a budget without raising sales and property taxes, and we've accomplished that, and so I will be giving an affirmative vote for that, but I do feel it's necessary to mention that beginning immediately tomorrow, we need to be aggressively looking at how we are going to address the next budget cycle. We cannot wait until the next budget season to accomplish that. Our costs are staggeringly increasing, especially pensions. We merely are plugging a water leak in a dam that has an infrastructure problem, and that dam is going to collapse at some point if we don't find a way to fix our long-term issues. This helps us get through the next couple of years, but it does not address our long-term issues, and we have to start finding ways to run better government more efficiently and deliver value to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ruckregel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager and your staff, for all the hard work you've done on this budget. When I look at the budget, though, and I'm going to agree with Councilman Euler's comments about what we have in front of us, we have not fixed any of the structural problems that have come to define our budgets over the multiple years. They're here in front of us. They're not two years down the line. They've been with us for a number of years, and they sit here in front of us. And they truly define what holds us back as a city. We don't see anything in this budget which moves our neighborhoods forward. It's status quo. We don't see anything that's moving our businesses forward. As a matter of fact, we're raising fees on businesses in storage of this or some, and they may seem small, but they're not to the business that's paying them. And there's nothing in this budget which moves businesses forward. We're continuing the roadwork that we've done over the past couple of years, but we know around this council that those dollars still don't encompass enough to be able to get us ahead of the game over the traction that we've lost on the capital programs over the years, and so we're not making progress there. And while I appreciate the work that's been done on the revenue, we've got to look at our business climate, the trends that we've seen in the various categories over the years, and even the recent sales of not only our residential properties, but big commercial properties, and how that is going to affect our taxing base over the years to come. It's interesting, because when I look at this budget, and... It's interesting, because when I look at this budget, and we see increases in each one. Property taxes over the next two years are going to go up, if we look out two years. Sales taxes are going to go up. HRA taxes are going to go up. The gambling vote's going to go up. Utilities are going to go, utility fees revenue is going to go up. Local motor fuel tax revenue is going to go up. Franchise fee revenue is going to go up. Videos, video revenue is going to go up. And we're going to be able to collect all of our demolition and weeds because we know we have a, but we know we have a problem there in collecting those things. If you look at the budget, it looks pretty rosy because everything isn't a positive in two years from now. But that's not what the trends show. It's not what we know around this council that has helped us. Because even last year, when we revised the second year of a two-year budget cycle, we were off by a considerable amount as we're going to end this year. And that's with only 12 months to look at. We look at the pensions, and even with all of the extra dollars coming in, and we're looking at about a 9.8% increase in revenues, our pension liability does not move one single dime in two years. If there's a way to honor the people that work for the city, it's to make sure that we get our pension liability paid and get it paid on time. And not to move that needle within two years is, to me, unacceptable. And then I, it's great to create a budget. But in business, we know that a budget is just a piece of paper, and it's a direction. It's got to be worked each and every day. And where you actually measure the budget is if you're able to make it happen. Now, again, I go back. When we revised the budget a year ago, we're going to be way off from where we land that plane this year. But on the budget that we have right now, and I appreciate the funds that we're going to be hopefully adding into the General Fund that's unobligated, because we've got a self-imposed percentage of 25% that we've got to work towards. And, you know, we're going to be able to hopefully add 1.6 million if everything goes right. But that means that we've got to be almost 97%, 97% correct in our budget. We can't miss anything. And with CBD dollars coming in, with state dollars, with so much unknown out there, with the online effect, with our sales taxes and the trends that we see, it's hard for me to believe that we are going to have that. One lawsuit changes everything here. And all of a sudden, we go back to where we have for the past couple of years of spending down those fund balances. I just can't vote for this, because this is not sustainable. It does not put us on a plan. And in two years, we are going to be in the same boat that we are today. We were tasked by the citizens of Peoria to create a budget that moves the city forward. This doesn't do it, and so I won't be voting for this today. But thank you for all the hard work, because I know that there are months and months of work that you and your staff have done on this.
Further discussion on this item? Councilman Grab?
Yes, this is a topic near and dear to my heart, since this is the 17th budget cycle I've been through, and I've heard this speech many, many times. And I've yet to have anyone come forward with a magical solution. So I await eagerly my colleagues' suggestions as to how we can get a handle on this. We're no different than every other city in this state, every other city council, every other mayor. And, you know, I'm waiting also for some help, which will be in vain, from the folks in Washington, DC, that are doing very little to help our urban areas. And I'm waiting also for the people in Springfield to realize that they punctured about a $2 million hole in our budget, Mr. Manager. And I believe I got a memo from our paid lobbyist in Springfield that there might be some legislation that would allow us to recoup maybe half of that. So when you have the federal government and the state government shoving its expenses down to the local level, what do you think is going to happen? When we have some of the laws that allow collective bargaining, et cetera, and arbitration, what do you think is going to happen? Yes, there are structural problems. Please bring to the council floor how you want to dismantle the current structure very specifically. And if it looks good, I'll support it. But in the meantime, it's what I've been hearing since 1993. And I am hopeful that eventually our federal lawmakers and state lawmakers would realize that the folks in the cities who have the biggest impact on people's lives, that's this city council picking up garbage, protecting people, that we are where the rubber meets the road. And when you start taking funds away from us and having misguided tax policies that supposedly are going to help the middle class and less, but do not, and when you have all kinds of shenanigans down in Springfield, which have been going on for probably 30 years or more, like pension money, which was misused, for example, for the teachers, Republican and Democrat, money not put in the lockbox where it belongs in a lockbox, but raided, then I have to hear that we've done all kinds of things wrong. Maybe there are problems that are occurring that affect our system that we are responding to as best we possibly can. Because I believe the manager has, by and large, done a great job with the resources he's had to deal with. However, and he's heard this from me 1,000 times before, I would never, ever bring to this floor anything that would hurt public safety. And I continue to feel that, as I look forward to the future, and I'm not, this is not going to be a Scrooge movie, but very honestly, we need to start planning on building an additional firehouse and filling some safety gaps in the northern part of the city, because that's what municipal government is all about, core and basic services. And that's what we should be looking at, because people can die if we don't adequately fund police and fire. Even when we do adequately fund it, we have terrible things that happen. And I personally, after the study we saw in 2004, I would never even imagine that we would consider decommissioning a fire engine. Yet that was a recommendation that was brought forward, which seriously, we did dodge that bullet. But I appreciate what my colleagues are saying. I have a different vision as to where the locus of the problem is and how it can be fixed. And I think it is not just fixed in Peoria, Illinois. And originally, I will mea culpa here. I was concerned about our paid consultant in Springfield. Probably he's worth every dime if we can get some things resituated down there. And he works hard for the City of Peoria, the people of Peoria to undo some of the damage. I mean, when you have a $2 million hole literally shot into a budget on top of our existing issues, which we had no matter what, that's, that's not us. And then when you have, I'll wrap it up. When you have federal dollars that are held up at the state level, that are going to build a bridge in the Second District, leaving Sheridan Road blocked off at Richmond, affecting one of our great high schools, because of shenanigans again done, which have nothing to do with this city council, any previous one, I think we need to start taking a look at where the real locus of the problem is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion on this item? Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting no on the budget tonight. The most significant thing to me is the Stormwater Utility Fee, where we will be spending hundreds of millions of dollars. And we got to get this right from the get-go. And I really believe this is taking us in the wrong direction. So, this is very significant. And, you know, I can't help but think that this particular formula and policy, it's creating a fix for part of the city that doesn't have a problem in, and will be wasting hundreds of millions of dollars. We could be using that money, solving this problem differently. And I really believe this is very significant for our community. So I can't vote for this budget tonight. Thank you.
Councilmen Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Manager, I want to thank you very much and your staff for all the hard work you've done the last several months to prepare this budget. This is my first time, my first go-around. Obviously, the process is not perfect, but I know everybody's worked really hard. I will be voting yes for the budget. Just a couple of things I'd like to see moving forward. As a businessperson, we worked really hard. We had, we had good momentum going this last summer about our strategic planning session. And as a businessman, I think the plan should come before the budget. And so I'm a little disappointed that some of the things we've done since I've been here the last seven or eight months, kind of seems to be a fire drill. I'd like to, in moving forward, maybe start in 2018. You've been around many years. Maybe have a calendar of very important events that keep coming back, month after month, year after year, so we can better prepare and have more time for discussion and research so we can try to make better decisions. So eventually, I think maybe next week, we'll have a vote on the strategic plan. But it's, to me, it's a little bit late. I mean, that plan should have been done at least three months ago, so we can study it and talk about it, and really match our plan with the budget. So thank you very much for all the hard work, and thank you to all my colleagues also.
Further discussion? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, as my colleagues have done in their comments, I want to thank the City Manager and his staff for all the hard work. You know, I think this is my fourth budget round, the second with the two-year cycle. And I know it, we've put in, you guys have put in a lot of work, and the council too. We've had a lot of meetings, and we've had a lot of discussions, a lot of report backs. And I appreciate all that work, as I know everyone else around the horseshoe does. You know, we were faced with a huge daunting task, being advised that we had to fill an $8 million gap. Now, I know it's not perfect, and it's a hard pill for all of us to swallow. But, you know, and I understand and respect Councilman Ruckregel's comments. There are structural issues that we need to look at, but I didn't hear him offer any solutions to those or any proposals to get those things resolved. We're here, we're the council, and we have to balance this budget. So it's not perfect, but I'm going to support it. You know, I helped come up with the idea to raise some of the fire revenues to, and restructure the Fire Department, so we could at least save the fire truck from being decommissioned and save some of those jobs. And I think that was helpful. I will bring up again, which I have brought up over and over again, I think in the future, we need to take a much more serious look at consolidating the township and the city and see what efficiencies and money can truly be saved there. And to take a much more thorough look at that, rather than the precursory, you know, report back that we got. So I think that's something we need to look at in the future. I hope Councilman Ruckregel and others can come up with some ideas for how we do restructure things. You know, we've done everything here. We've cut back in every department at least 5% or more. And as Councilman Euler, you know, mentioned, we did not raise property taxes or sales taxes. So for all of those reasons, I will be supporting this budget. And again, I thank the City Manager and all of the staff for helping come up with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. As we were discussing before the meeting started, and as per the very reasonable request of Councilor Jensen, I think we do need to have a thorough discussion of township government. Could we, Clerk Ball, arrange to have such a discussion? I'm not set on this, but project for the month of February. And we'll have a thorough, and not just the manager's memo, not that I think there's anything wrong with your memo, but it is the beginning of a discussion and an analysis. I know you gave a first blush analysis as to whether or not there would be any savings by doing this. I think we need to have a clear conscience as the town trustees that there is a better way of doing things, or that there isn't a better way of doing things. And so if we could schedule that sometime in February. And our, Councilor Jensen, how do you, how would you like us to structure this? Would you like presentations from each office holder? Are we thinking they're just going to justify their budget? Or in particular, is there something in particular you would like incorporated in the presentation, so we don't fall short on what you want to see?
Can I respond?
Your mic's on.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, and I don't know if this gives us enough time, I think it would be helpful to have presentations from all the staff and what the duties are from all of the staff members. But I don't know if we could have an HR expert or person actually, you know, look at all the duties like you do when you come in and do reclassifications of jobs. You know, we've done that in the past at the city. We've had people interviewed by HR experts on what their duties are, what they do, and then they make recommendations on whether those jobs can be joined together and whether some of the duties are duplicated, that kind of thing. So it may take more than just proposed presentations. It may take a little bit of some studying.
Right.
And then I, of course, like eventually to have some public input and some public meetings on it.
I think that's a good idea. And Manager, would that be our HR department that could do that?
I think that we can to a certain extent. I think we, as we've done with the previous proposal, we would want to work with the township officials on that. I mean, the difficulty is that the township supervisor position, or the township assessors' positions are really specialized, and we don't have anything like that. And that was in our report back, that we don't really have anything that's like that in city government. Some of the other functions we do. So we can, we can slot positions in as if somebody was, was within this organization and what it would look like and what those costs are. I think that was really what we tried to do in that, that last budget report back. The difficulty is going to be that assessor's function, which is something that we really don't have.
And we'll build that in. Any of the other trustees have any thoughts of what needs to be incorporated in certainly the first quarter, if not in February? Please feel free to bring those forward, because, Mayor, we want to be sure everything is addressed once and for all, if anything is once and for all. But, yeah, so we'll incorporate right away what you're suggesting. Any other thoughts from any of us? We should, sometime in the liaison, you can share them with me, certainly with the manager, or with any of our township office holders. And if there's a legal issue, we'll involve, of course, the legal counsel for the township. Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I also would like to thank the City Manager and the staff for a job well done on putting together this budget. But I find it kind of interesting. I said four and a half years ago that the thing that we're facing today, as every other city was facing, was going to be the new normal. Unless we find a sizable and ongoing revenue stream, this process is going to get tougher and tougher every year. And I hope the people sitting around this horseshoe, the commitments and the comments that they made tonight of what they're going to do, get it in their head that they're going to have to make some damn tough calls when it comes to neighborhoods, when it comes to staff, when it comes to other departments. Calls that we don't want to make and would rather do without making. But that's what's going to have to happen if we're going to right-size this, because we're not the only city that's going through this. Every city, major city, small city, et cetera, is going through the same darn thing. And we can make all the promises we want to make on this floor. If we don't find a revenue stream of sizable, of sizable content and ongoing, we're going to have to deal with this every year. You're fooling yourself. I've been sitting around this horseshoe a long time, and things have changed from the way they used to be. And we better realize it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Mr. Manager, I'd like to thank you and your staff for the work on this budget. I think that in a lot of years, probably my 18th year, unprecedented number of meetings that we've had, unprecedented number of report backs, extreme amount of information that the council asked your staff for on relatively short notice, as we're meeting every week, came back with really good information. So to your staff as well, thank you for that. We can't make these decisions without them. We can't make these decisions without them. In terms of the budget itself, I, you know, everybody has to vote their conscience on this, obviously. And I can appreciate every single council member's viewpoint. When we pass the individual components with the different ordinances that allow us to put the budget together, some people don't like those. If it's stormwater utility, if it's amusement tax, whatever it may be. That's a great opportunity to voice concern or disagreement or agreement with those individual ordinances and vote no. The public knows you voted no. The public knows why you voted no. And I think that's so appropriate. To get to a position where you shoot down an entire budget, you know, based on, you know, parts of it, I think is really hard. I mean, you know, we, the whole council did a lot of work, an unbelievable amount of work. Most of us were here for every meeting and for every special meeting. You know, I'll remind the council, we did put more money into neighborhoods. We have another neighborhood police officer. That's one of the number-one things that the people in the communities wanted was another neighborhood police officer. We funded it. And it wasn't easy to find that money, as we all know. What do we do for business? Well, we still have $9 million a year that we're putting into roads that we didn't have two years ago. That doesn't include $4 million we got for University Street. That area from Pioneer Parkway down to Town Line was huge. We had businesses that were going to leave. And now, you know, we got to give credit. I mean, that wasn't all our money. But that was a lot of hard work by staff and council members to help us to get that money. That's one of the biggest things business want. They want a good infrastructure, a good road network, and we have a long way to go, but we're going there. So to say we didn't do anything for neighborhoods and businesses is incredibly short-sighted. And I would agree on the pensions. I mean, they're tough. But folks, we'll have our annual meeting with our legislators in a month or so. And the number-one thing we always talk to those folks about are the pensions that they hand out and give us the bill for. They're not sustainable. They're not sustainable in Peoria. They're not sustainable anywhere. There's not an actuary alive that can show you the pension obligations that have been put on our communities that we can find a way to pay them. There's not. They can't do it. It's not if they implode, it's when they implode. It's, they're eating up almost every penny of our property taxes now. So, you know, I can't wait to hear, even if we don't, you know, have to wait till election season starts next year, but I can't wait to hear the ideas of how we're going to do the other obligations that we have in the city, not to mention the pensions, which we have no control over, that are totally unsustainable. The, Councilman Grab, I appreciate your comments on Matrix. You know, that was a study that was done. And not to go tit-for-tat, the Matrix study also identified the closure of a fire station, which we've never addressed. But not to, I mean, that was, the study was done a long time ago, but the one thing that we have to be committed to doing in 2018 is taking the most comprehensive look at our fire department that we've ever taken. And that's good for the fire department, it's good for our citizens, it's good for us. We got to understand why only less than 4% of our calls are for fires. We have the concerns that we have about the rising number of calls. Well, the rising number of calls are for emergency response. Is it the city's obligation to go out every time, there's a, and go code one with a truck and an engine and, you know, sometimes a rescue squad? Is it really, is that our obligation? I don't know. But we need to have an understanding of how many thousands of calls were going on and if it really is our obligation to go on those. Is it our obligation to go to private nursing homes and wellness centers and help pick people off the floor? Or is that the obligation of the private property owner to cover that? I don't, I mean, I know what I think, but we need to have that discussion. And then we need to sit down with the project medical director who dictates this stuff in our community and say, okay, what's appropriate? Who's going to go on the calls? And how are you going to pay for it? And then we might get into a whole nother set of fees with our friends in the fire department in Local 50 about, okay, if we're doing this stuff, if we're doing this extra stuff, what is the compensation for that? Because it's not free. So, you know, that has got to be near the top of our priority list. So when we do have this discussion, and I agree with Councilman Grab, we do need to know where the best locations are for our fire houses. And we do have to make sure that our response is still there for those. In my last piece, and again, and to the council, I really appreciate the time and effort. I mean, it was, I don't even know how many meetings, but it was a meeting, at least one meeting a week and sometimes several meetings a week for the last almost three months. And it's grueling and it's hard. And nobody likes to make these tough decisions and, you know, whether some people realize it or not, we did make structural change here. There are people that aren't going to have jobs because we adjusted the structure at City Hall. In addition, you know, the township, I'm glad to have one more meeting, but I hope it's the last one because I got, I got, I've seen reams of information on this. I hope everybody takes a chance to read everything that we've already seen because I don't think the results are going to be much different. But if we need to have one more comprehensive meeting to put that issue to bed, I'll be there. I would urge everybody to read the information we've already gotten and understand how tremendously difficult it would be for us to inherit all that additional work and not, and do it with less people than they have. It's, but, Mr. Manager, we've had a couple of requests for things. What I would like to, and this is really kind of an echo on what Councilman Euler said, just a follow-up, we do need to have more information more often. And I know our, you and Mr. Scroggins do a great job of getting us the financial stuff and the numbers lag, I get all that. But I really would like to see us, in some months, there's going to be more information than others. I'd like to see a monthly, a monthly report, tracking our budget. And I really think it would not only help, you already track it and you know it, but it would help this council keep their eye on the ball so we're not all of a sudden in June going, what happened? How are we going to, how are we going to make up for this? Help us do our jobs better. I think we have to, I think we have to really do a, make a strong effort on the stormwater utility. We have to, we have to oversaturate people with information as this comes out because there's, I understand, you know, Councilman Montalongo's concerns with this. We've been talking about stormwater utility and the need to start addressing our CSO for over 20 years. It's a long time coming. If we would have done it in a smaller way 20 years ago, at least we'd have some money there to start with, but we don't. So let's make sure we over-communicate on stormwater, on the, how we're going to work the credits, and maybe a discussion at council, just so we totally understand that and can communicate that back to our citizens and our constituents as well. And as the stormwater projects come up to be funded, and they always are, but let's keep an eye on, you know, where those projects are. Because I think some people think that they're only in, you know, down in the CSO area. And frankly, they're not. They're all over the city. So I apologize to the council if I went long there. Thank you to, also, again, to the council for a lot of strong deliberations on some very difficult issues this year.
Councilman Agus.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. In light of the comments that have been made tonight, which I think are all very good, there's been two recommendations. One, to get more information about the township and the structure of the township. We've had another request or a recommendation to have a thorough review of the fire department. So in light of those two departments being brought up, how about if we do that for all departments? And if we start in February with the township, in March do the fire department, in April do the police department, in May do public works, in June do code enforcement or separate out economic development? I mean, I think that the public has questions about how things are being run. I know that if you look online, the people are very upset about the idea that we'd have a whole apartment complex notified just days before they were going to have to find new, a new place to stay. And that was a result of a buildup of the lack of work by the property owner. And people are wondering, what happened? How is it that we could have a building in such bad shape? And we let it go to the point that people now, right before Christmas, have to find someplace else to live. And we could go through every single department. There's questions about the police department, how it's run. I think Councilman Seer has a very good point. I think his message is, you can tell a lot about a city by what's in its budget. And I think that's the same point that Councilman Ruckregel's making, the same point the mayor's making, the same point Mr., you know, Councilman Turner's making and Montalongo. And I'm imagining that Councilwoman Moore and Riegenbach would, Councilman Riegenbach would be saying the same thing. We all know that the budget is tied to our priorities. And for some of it, they're kind of askew. So, Mr. City Manager, I would very much like to recommend that we go through each and every department to get an idea of exactly what they're doing. And maybe through that kind of scrutiny early, there would be some recollection or some identifying of places that they could make adjustments that for future budget cycles would have an impact.
I'm seeing no further lights. We have a motion and a second. And with no further lights, please cast your ballots. Motion passes. Nine ayes, two nays, voting no. Councilmembers Montalongo and Ruckregel. Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and I believe there are some cards on the way to you.
Okay, thank you. Suzy Walden.
Good evening, Mayor Jim Artis and Peoria Council. I am Suzy McCarthy-Walden, a retired nurse from St. Francis, 34 years in Peoria, Illinois. Originally, yes, from Queens, New York. Okay, let's get down to brass tacks. Peoria's finest firemen and police over the years in Peoria should never, ever have to come through those doors with a budget. Okay? Yes, Peoria, your budget is a mess, a mess. In New York, Peoria, I have to tell you, New Yorkers take care of their first responders. They are the best in the nation. They treat them like gold, gold, okay? Angel of mercy is what they are about, okay? Peoria finest responders, nurses, doctors in this town should not be approached in a budget way. Yes, it has to be, okay? Sad. Shame on you, Peoria. Shame on every one of you, okay? Yeah, I'm from New York. I'm not afraid to speak my mind. 34 years in this city. I feel sad. Yes, Jim Artis, if I could see your eyes. Thank you. This is sad. This is a sad day for Peoria. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate your time and all the effort that Councilman Grab, you are wonderful, all the time and energy you have put into the fire department, you know, and caring about your police. I know that Jim Montalongo, I've worked for him on his campaign. I know that each one of you have heart. You have heart because you wouldn't be sitting in the seats you are sitting in today if it weren't for the people of Peoria voting you in. Okay? Thank God that's over. I said my Hail Mary before, I'll say another Hail Mary. Thank you. Thank you, Jim Artis, for having me here tonight. Oh, by the way, I don't live in Peoria anymore. I live in Eureka. I moved there four months ago. It's a good Christian-based city. And I'm sure, I am just sure, from that little tiny place, that their finest responders in their town, the budget, the budget there, I don't know it yet because I haven't lived there long enough. Okay, I know. I know, Mayor, I'm taking too much of your time tonight. But these are important matters. Your wife, it's an RN, St. Francis, please, please, people, think, think about this when you come home tonight to your families. Do you have heart? Are you going to have more respect for the budget in these matters? Anyway, goodbye. Thank you. And that's it. Good luck to all of you. Bye.
Madam Clerk.
End of session. So we would be adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank our listening audience and remind the listening public that we will be here next Tuesday for our regular city council meeting. This meeting is adjourned.
I said Seer, I said the mayor. I would have probably said two words if you had done his little pre-election get over there. That was total bullshit. I didn't know. 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 Not at all. I haven't told anybody. Because I'm not, I don't know.
Because I've told everybody. I said...